All right. So I've got a few hot topics to go over this evening before we get into the down and dirty kind of numbers of the budget. So one of our last meetings, we had a discussion about Aqua Park. And so I have some updated news. Last week Greg was my shining star. I gave him a gold star for the day and two thumbs up. So he brought in, um, he brought in an aerial view of the Aqua Park and which ones had to be taken down and which ones. There's another one that we didn't take down last year, but it started losing air toward the end of the year. And it was the swing. So the swing, you know, kind of like this, the middle of it would start to kind of cave. So he was really concerned about that one coming up for this year. Um, but I gave him your honest feedback to say, hey, what if we find something new to go in there? So he did it. The jungle Joe that was up there, I want to say it cost us about $15,000. He found, um, so imagine this big circular piece of equipment and it's got teeter totters on every side of it. So that's new. So that's going to replace the jungle Joe. And there's a slide that had to come down last year. So he's found another slide. And the walkways that he needed and some pull up pads was going to be on there. So that was his 20. But then he told me something else. He said, Lynn, and we've all talked about the safety. You know, people got this swing and it's losing air. Don't think I'm going to be able to put it back up this year. And it's in the middle of the lake, like with all the inflatables. He said, I found something that I really would like to get. And that is an inflatable guard stand. That solves a lot of air safety issues as far as the guards not being able to see. It solves the guards being able to get to it a lot faster. And I'm like, yes, I love that idea. Please give me a price. I will find your money, just give me the price. Um, and he also talked about getting a, um, in my mind, this is how I'm picturing it. It's like one of the stands that's applicable, like an actual physical guard stand that you put on land. But it would be, it would have an umbrella where you could be covered and it would be right there between the beach area and I don't remember if you call it the dock or the deck, but right there. So that would be right at the water to go in. So I really liked that a lot better as far as our safety. Um, and something else with the slide that came out of commission. So the slide, like if you're facing this way, the slide would go down. There's also a piece on this side and you can't see it. So with this new slide, that goes away. We don't have that, that blind area anymore. So I really liked that. And again, I told you guys, I don't know if we can get these parts in by May 24th, I think it's open in the weekend, is that right? I believe it's May 24th is open in the weekend for the park. Um, yes, May 24th. So I don't know that we're going to be able to get those in, but they're ordered, they're kind of out of our hands now because when we get them. So there's an Aqua Park update. Um, so I have an update on Route 460 project.
She goes from Patina.
So what's it going to cost on Aqua Park?
Right now, what you guys had allowed was like, it was right over, I think it was 21. And that, that was without the inflatable guard stand. So I told him, give me a price. And I mean, even if we're not able to do it out of what you guys had allocated, maybe there's something else in our budget that's not used as much that we can take it from. I don't know how much it'll be. Or maybe we'll take it out of next year's budget. So I did put in some money in Aqua Park in the next year's budget. I've got a very, very, very rough draft of it. It's never near being ready. Um, but I did put in some money for next year. So we can plan on actually replacing some of this. Um, so Route 460 paving. You guys know this project's been going on since COVID times. COVID happened, put a pause on everything. It's a three-phase project. And when it was first done, the whole project was approved with VDOT for over a million dollars of paving. And we paid half. Guys, we don't, we don't have half. We don't have over $600,000 to allocate the paving. So Donnie and I and Susan had met with their engineer that's local and we had worked out a very great plan. It was going to cost us about 3 through 50. And VDOT would be paying the other 50%. We were going to take the project from what they face, or sorry, what they classify as a construction project down to a maintenance project. And that was going to let us be able to do this other option. So the engineer that we met with was all in agreement. His higher ups were not. They want all or nothing.
Did you have the money before?
Pretty good. Where did it start out with them having 100% coverage on paving?
It was 50/50, it was rent to sharing, so it was 50/50. So there is a 100% pavement option. Sorry, I said pavement option, I meant payment option.
Okay.
But, uh, I don't, I'll offer it to you, but I don't recommend it. VDOT will pay you 100% of this Route 460 project out here on Finn Castle if we get the money, if we get the money in the fall of 2026. That project's getting ready to start like this half of the year. Do you guys want to wait till the fall of 2026 if we get the money? I personally don't think that's a good idea. Because what if we don't get it? And can you guys really stand everybody?
Coming up to town?
Yeah.
On that road?
I mean, think about literally all those motorcycles coming in on that. It's, it's not good.
Tell me where it begins and where it ends.
So the water plant on Thorn Street, you know where that's at? All right. And it's going to come down to Italian Village if we do all three phases. And to be honest, we don't think we're going to have the money to complete the whole thing. Okay? So it's going to go down Thorn Street, out of Italian Village, all the way out to the Florida and toward Ranger Chevrolet. We think we can probably get to maybe Pop Shop. So PSA is a part on this, 50/50 for materials, materials only. Um, they will provide us a couple of workers. So maybe we could, you know, Donnie and I had talked about that. And you know, maybe if they have like a dump truck, they could haul rock, haul, haul the stone for us. You know, something like that, so it don't take air guys away from being able to work. And they can kind of go do the lead work. So that was, that was the thought. Um, but truly, we, we don't know that we're going to have all the funds we need. We, now, on paper, on paper, we do. When you get into it and you get doing everything, maybe we don't.
So paving is the big issue though, right? Because our guys can do the digging, do the pipe replacement.
Yes.
But paving.
So here is what Donnie and I have discussed. The town has a paper now. The town can do it a whole lot cheaper than what we have in having to outsource it. He thinks that we can do it ourselves for $200,000, up to a max of 250. And that's the portion of Finn Castle there down to like the Hardee's red light. And that's what we're going to be starting on. Like that's our first phase that we're going to be doing.
Would PSA help with any paving costs?
No, material only. And they are very, very like, we are going to watch every penny. When it gets to air max, we're done. They will not spend a penny over, they're allocated 650. And again, for materials only.
What was the budget amount for materials?
1.3.
1.3?
Yes. So, um, this is going to be done, it's called a force account. So we had never done a force account until we did lead and copper. Um, a force account makes us track everything. So every person that's there, their hours, what they did, what equipment was used, um, what the weather was like, who was on scene, like as far as us. Like if, if Donnie was there to inspect the day, VDOT will have somebody come out periodically and check the job. But I just want to let you all know what paving's looking like. So in this budget that I've got, again, very, very rough draft, I've got $400,000 for paving in there because we still have other streets we need to pave too. And, and we, we know we have some that are in desperate need right now.
So is that $400,000 of our guys doing the work and just in asphalt? Or is it hiring a company to come do it?
Um, so that would be, sorry, I'm sure it's getting stuck on this over here. Um, that would be like, if we had to have trucking for the stone, that would be if we had to have milling, like you had to mill the road up and that would be asphalt. So that's, that's all of it there. So I just want to let you all know where I'm kind of thinking of going with paving. Because if it's going to take a max 250 and then we have a $400,000 budget, that's 150.
It's still more than we've allotted the past few years.
I think we've got 150 in here right now. And we've got 135.5 in here right now. So I mean, if, if I need to whittle it down, I can a little. But I know that it's going to take about that much to do that there. So I want to make sure that once we tear the road up, we can put it back. I'm pretty sure y'all want that too.
That would be nice.
Yes, very nice. So there's Route 460.
When we had talked about that in the spring, we had talked about, there was something to do with applying for funding. You know, we were three phases, we thought we'd get one and two done. The third phase, we had discussed go ahead, like going ahead and applying for funding for it to be out in front of it for the future. Is there any update to that? And then could that money then be applied to, say we can only get through two of those phases?
We did get approved for $90,000 from Coldfield. Coldfield, this is what Pam and Tom, Coldfield Development.
But not nearly enough money to?
I mean, on paper, they say that we're going to be able to do it all.
Who's they?
Like Thompson and Liston, this guy that I was breaking down. On paper, they say that we can do it.
And that's based on like, because we increased water rates or sewer rates, wasn't it?
This is water rates.
This is water, okay. So we did a revenue increase to get this project completed, right?
That was for all three spaces.
Yes. So again.
I'm, I'm missing one dropped off.
Okay.
One dropped off was VDOT's helping us out with paving.
Well, that is part of it, paving is a big part of it. So do you remember when Royal Development had this parity review on us?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Corin Maine said, hey, we're going to hold as much of our bid as we can hold. And they did, and they honored that. So there's other things, um, what's the bridge? The bridge thing that I talked about? Um, it goes under the bridge and it holds the pipe to the bridge.
So some type of hangers?
Yeah, we'll call them straps to last better.
Okay. So that is, it was $65,000 and we don't know exactly what that's going to be now.
Oh, uh, sorry.
But that's, that's where we're afraid, that something like that. So we're going to plan to, to go for the whole thing.
If it can.
It's just the paving part of VDOT and them not sticking to their obligation that we were banking on. But yeah, they'll give us some money, but a year later. So we, we have to kind of scratch our heads for a year and hope that they don't change when the administration changes and, you know, say, oh, sorry.
I just, I don't think that we wait for a year for it to pay, pay back. I don't think that's a good idea at all.
I think we hear about it.
Absolutely. That's the one thing you usually hear about. So.
In your $400,000 for paving, are we hitting the out next to the salt though?
Well.
Please say if you have it.
Well.
Yeah.
We're going to look and see if we can do it in this budget year.
Okay.
I might just scroll away.
Okay.
So we're going to look to see.
Yeah. You're not supposed to tell us, but you know.
It's that slush fund. Somebody's slush fund. But, uh, we're hoping that we can get that like this budget year. But if not, yes, that's like July 1st, that's where we're going to be. But I, I really don't think we can wait that long on anything.
I think the purchase of that paper's almost paid for itself already.
I mean, it is wonderful. It is great.
It can get worse over time too.
100%, every time they scrape it, it just chunks up a little more. They, they've actually put filler in it and it just comes right back out. But it is our plan to hit that as soon as we can. So council-directed spending. We had talked just a little bit last year. And Danny, this is a little update with you, just kind of a crash course. We have revenue recovery funds. Revenue recovery funds.
Don't call it ARPA, it's not ARPA, we already spent ARPA.
Okay, so let me explain our ARPA money. We did get ARPA money of $4.2 million. So their auditors told us, this is my recommendation, let that money pay for your salaries. Okay, so that's what we did. We have allocated every last dime of that million, $4.2 million and it reimburses for our salaries. So now that means the money that was budgeted for our salaries come up for grabs. It was free money. So we have put a lot, a lot, a lot of money in what's called an LGIP. It's called Local Government Investment Pool. And it earns interest every month. Okay? So right now, there is just over $2 million in it. It's barely over. And last year, we applied for a grant with Royal Development, trying to get a new police cruiser. And they said, we have too much money, we're not eligible. Okay? So council looked at that and looked at some capital improvement, like the paper that we're talking about. It was purchased with those funds. Um, the fire department had purchased a truck out of those funds.
Dump truck.
We purchased a dump truck, we purchased a, a tractor for, um, the park, a side-by-side for the park. That way they can take it all the way back to the end of the lake. So we're trying to use that money in the best way that we can use that money. Um, and something that our auditors have told us too, and the VRA, who is our funding agency on a lot of our big projects, they want us to have a fund balance, like they require us to have a fund balance. And we hope they're able to work up and put that money into where our audit was very good. And VRA is very pleased with us. So.
But they'll still throw you an parity question and make you about lose.
That was Royal Development, not VRA.
So what's your balance in that account, right?
What, $2 million?
I would, so you've got, I mean, before the meeting, I counted it up. I must count 3.2. Cause you've got a line item, you've got sports complex line item, and then you've got a hotel line item. And there may have been another one.
Others not.
So there's like three, there's 3.2.
Others not.
You can't be off by a million bucks, like it's, it's, I, I'm tracking 3.2, is that wrong? Okay.
It's not, but in that account.
Okay.
It is not in that account.
It's not in the LGIP.
Not in that, LGIP.
How much interest does the one with the $2 million, how much is that given monthly?
Uh, it's about 12.
Actually, I think it's at nine. I think it was at 9,000.
Okay.
Nine a month?
9,000? 900? 9,000?
Yeah.
Oh wow. I think it's.
I said it probably like a month ago, two months ago. Are you, just search, search up the top, I'm sure it's quiet. I don't say too many. Cause I think I forwarded it to you, Andy. LGIP interest over the years. Should have an Excel sheet attachment to it.
Well, while you guys are working, if you don't care, keep looking. Um, but during that council-directed spending, there was a sign mentioned for the fire department in honor of Cecil Johnson. I have been asked about the sign several times throughout this year. What would you all think of that sign?
I think, I think when we originally, when I put those slides together, that information, we had up to 60,000, which if we spend that knowing now that the guys would do the masonry work, I don't see any way we'd even spend close to 60 grand on them.
I don't think it'll take 60 grand.
It'd be good to have it for the materials to build the wall, but.
Is there one here? Cause I keep hearing about one in the basement.
Uh, that's, that's, uh, that's for, it's not a marketing one, worth thinking. It's like an information board, like a.
Oh, the kiosk. Well, actually. Okay, so the kiosk was something, can I talk about this?
Well.
It was something that came from Tassel today, from a previous director that they got from a grant fund. However, when it was ordered, I think that they thought they ordered the whole thing. We have kiosk holder, no screen. So yes, the holder is downstairs.
Cause I remember we talked about it, maybe potentially two is some of those.
But there is no actual.
Things by parties.
There's no actual kiosk directory, just about.
That we had been discussing something like to kind of honor Cecil for, for many years.
We had gone for a grant to get that kind of way.
Yeah, and that's when Thompson and Cherub told us we had too much money in the bank account. So they would not help fund it. So that's why I was trying to chip away.
I have an idea. You guys can tell me that I'm crazy, in no way, and that's fine, but I have an idea. What if we did purchase the sign? And what if we offered businesses to advertise on it for a fee?
What type of advert?
Like would it rotate advertisement on this? Hmm.
See, we have one in our church, it's the digital sign. And you can like literally sit in your office, do it, and the sign will change. And then you can put as much as you want on it.
See, I think we should do that this, by pressure of having a sign, not as a revenue stream, since the businesses are already paying those taxes and things of that nature. And it's rare that you'll clearly ever talk against trying to bring money in. But that's just my two cents. But I think trying to, uh, the logistics of trying to manage that also is all this business they pay. You know, all keeping up with all the businesses that pay to do so, I, I think.
I mean, pay upfront, that's what I was.
How much, what kind of figure are you looking at?
I mean, what if we did $100 a month? And I mean, say you have 24 hours a day, that sign rotates constantly. That's good advertising.
You could run it for a year. Then, I mean, can I like sell them breaks to get the bulldog built out at the high school?
Well, I, I, I see it.
And like nonprofits, obviously we could not charge nonprofits. That type of flipping.
Or a year of the P D ministry to get it paid for?
And this is going to be at Hardee's?
Fire Department.
You're probably not making too many of it.
Depends on your businesses.
But if you're a question of like, $100 a month, is that right?
Let's just do easy math. $100 a month, you have 10 businesses, that's $1,000. Times 12, that's $12,000 a year.
Back to the sports complex interest?
Yes.
It was $8200 this past month.
I dropped a zero somewhere.
Yeah.
My bad.
So it wasn't quite 9,000, but I mean, it was in the, the 8,000 range.
Last year was on 26. But interest rates are going to be dropping. I mean, I hope.
You want me to catch up?
Yeah, John, there are three or four problems.
We got like 10 more work to do.
I can't. We're on like six hope given these.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Jeff.
Um, so I was talking about the council-directed spending with the revenue recovery money. We had talked about a, a fire department sign down there, one of those digital signs. And I said, you know, would that be something that we would want to look into? Because I have been asked about that sign several times. Um, and then I said, like, you guys can totally shoot it down, just an idea. What if we let businesses advertise on it? And say, I, we just, I did simple math, say $100 and we have 10 businesses and this thing rotates constant 24 hours a day. So $100, 10 businesses, that's $1,000 a month, times 12, for 12 months, $12,000.
Just cause this is, is so far along the line around, how much is a billboard?
Billboard.
Per month?
It depends on the billboard, the big ones out on 460 are like 600 a month.
I, I just have nothing to compare to.
I mean, you won't charge $600 a month to advertise on the sign.
I was just trying to get.
What do we say? I can't remember, the sign, 60,000, was that right?
That was what was asked for. Um, I do know they've already gotten the electrical and everything done. Um, and the mayor had brought up, you know, if their town group could do the masonry work, you know, that could cut down on the cost. I don't know that we need the whole $60,000 to do that.
I think it was one of the only few items that didn't get accomplished out of that laundry list that we had.
Cause we must.
Yeah, you want him getting the, the VOTEP, Paul Stillsford to do that?
We could, well, and she's talking about the digital sign part of it.
I thought you were saying, she was talking about the masonry.
Yeah, the, the stone around it, I mean, yeah, we could ask them.
Yeah, that obviously has to be true. If you want to stay down.
The problem with that is it just, it might not fit in. Like we were using VOTEP on that sidewalk. And you know, and then it'd be dropped for a long period. And you know, and then it'd be dropped for a long period of time.
Yes.
But I mean, it's absolutely, it's not the whole topic. I wouldn't think it would be that, that long of a time, I wouldn't think.
Well, and you got federal dollars to do it, like, I don't disagree with you, I do think.
I mean, I understand the conflict.
I internalized it like Doc, you know, he's, he's a general spelling, you know, and helps to support and local things. If somebody gets asked, typically supports it, I think there's a lot of businesses like that, but.
We also have a lot that are hanging on by the thread, the twelve thousand a year.
Yeah.
Could.
You probably, your participation might be slim.
Well, I mean, you would have to, you would have to come up with, like, the metrics, like I know when you do radio advertising, you get. Two hundred slots over, you know, whatever it is, so you know, if, depending on the number that you have or interested in it, you know. How many times is it gonna go around? So what are they getting back for their money, maybe you're just charging fifty, you know, or maybe, I mean, I don't know.
It's continuous loop, right, so I mean, no way to plug in, you know, I, my business gets, you know, ten times a hour or whatever versus, you know, if you pay.
It's so much of a one in the high school, yeah, but it's kind of, which is every.
You might be able to.
Every three seconds or so.
It was just an idea.
And if we don't get it, we've got uh events that we can rotate through.
Yeah. Yeah, you could always do fillers. But just an idea, something that might generate just a little bit. So if y'all want to think about that, and then maybe at our next budget meeting, we can maybe decide something.
When do we start those?
Right now. Um we really do need to set some budget meetings, I know you were gonna be out of town in March.
Yep, but they got canceled.
Right, so we can, we can kinda do some more then.
Should be up until June. Nah, I'm sorry, I took it away.
Are you, if you're gonna be out of town between like now and end of March? I'll be gone the nineteenth through the twenty-eighth of February.
Don't be out till twenty-seventh.
So this is just an example, Mike. So those little billboards, this is going up, the billboards for McDonald's and four sixty, those little billboards right there are four hundred dollars.
Oh wow, okay, I, I just.
Yeah. I looked it up for something I was like.
I may have a random value here and there, but I'm.
The person that handed it up before the meeting was based on the debt numbers that we were shown. So the calculation is about, I think that just about enough to kill all the debt joints.
Okay, y'all ready for next topic?
Yeah, it's, let's go.
These, these aren't fun topics, guys. Yay. So. Again, I have a very, very rough draft of budget. And I'm looking to see if I can find some money. And it's very hard to find money, because I don't have money tree. I have thought about asking you on what you would think about raising garbage rates. From fourteen dollars on that, uh minimum pickup fee for like a residential customer in town. Raise that to fifteen dollars. And, you know, we do have out of town rates too. Getting right in there. Out of town rates twenty-five dollars a week, no, I'm sorry, month, sorry, sorry, month. And if we were to raise these a dollar, that would be twenty-seven thousand dollars to our budget.
Both in, and out of town?
Probably the out of town alone is already twenty-five.
I don't know.
I have to believe it.
Uh, Jack, out of town, huh?
That's what you usually.
Yeah, hurt the ones outside of town.
Thinking on the benefit.
Yeah.
Make them make the BMS.
Yeah, as far as like, is this for a particular purpose? Is it connected to paying on that, that garbage truck? Or is it just a key place where case with uh labor costs or?
So I'm hoping to do a cost of living rates, like we're, wanna try something different this year. I fully believe that if you have a good employee, they should be rewarded. And I would like to do kind of a hybrid, like we stopped doing performance evaluations, how could you tell you how many years ago? I'd like to bring that back. And I would like to do some kind of hybrid of, like, maybe you get one point five percent everybody across the board. And then your performance evaluation will give you a little bit of room, you get more.
Would that be up to the department that's to the department?
They would do the evaluations. And then it's based on a score of where, what kind of range you would fall into. But I, I believe if you have somebody out there that just absolutely gives it their all, they need to be rewarded for that.
I like evaluations if they're not correct.
Right.
You know, if they're just, you know, you're a five star, every employee's a five star, and I think they're useless.
I don't think that we'll have that, I don't.
Because that, that goes against the people who does give it their all.
Yes, it does. And I mean, if you have somebody come and they just kind of, they just make it, they just make it through the day. And then they just make it. I mean, you're not wrong. But this performance evaluation, maybe that's a step to say, I mean, I want, I need to get in here. Well.
Or to weed them out, and they'll be like, oh, I got one point five amount.
Um you also, it's also CYA, so if you do have to get rid of somebody, you have something.
It's a documentation to.
Yeah.
Something to, a platform to justify your, your decision.
I need to roll back to Joe, sorry. Twenty-seven thousand is if we increase in town by a dollar, that's not out of town.
So I just did the average cost for residential trash, remember, it's average across the nation is between fifty, or fifteen and fifty bucks a month.
I have a rate comparison for you guys to look at, and we're lower than some of the other towns. I'm waiting on the one town to get me back, one of their neighbors, and I haven't got it back yet.
Plus one thing, we offer that, none of the other councils do, there's recycling center.
True. Yeah, those people need to quit, they're crap in their plastic bags. Nuts.
Yeah, we had a conversation on that where I think we agreed in one meeting to leave it open, have it open every day. I don't think that ever happened.
No, we, we did, we did it for a month, and Sundays we got overloaded.
By Sunday.
Don't make requests like Monday.
It was.
I think we just closed it on Sunday, right?
Yeah, that's how we closed it.
We, we had tried to do it. Right. And it, it was not doing.
It, it made it one month, I think, or maybe two months.
I'm thinking closer to one.
By Monday morning, it was.
Overflowed.
It's horrible.
Um completely side note on air recycling center. Um apparently, we have people that are getting into our dumpsters. Yeah, the recycling center. We now have a, what's it called, you, didn't you just order?
The sign.
The signs?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know what they're called, but it's basically do not enter.
Do not enter.
It's a different version of do not enter.
Um but so we want to put it up in the dumpster to keep people, at least, at least we have a sign saying, please don't get in it.
Having the signs up will keep us from any litigation, if someone has been there, they get hit in the head with a.
That's why we're putting it up, yeah.
You know, hopefully we don't go up there and into the dumpster, bother in it, so, you know. Somebody, I can't remember who had suggested it, but somebody had talked to me, cause we have a little building out there, right? Um, cause you know how at the dumpster have the, the building that you can put stuff in that's still good? That you could come and, and take it, like doing something like that? So if you wanna get rid of it, you can just put it in that building, but it's still good, somebody could use it, you don't wanna throw it away. But you don't want it anymore. I know my brother got like a whole set of dishes like that. And then you wouldn't have to get in the dumpster.
I think that they're scrap, I mean, they're looking for anything to scrap.
Yeah.
We used to keep a flatbed out there, that people who'd throw scrap on. Uh, it did, I don't think it lasted very long, that was, I think that's when, that might have been, maybe, somebody had their own out there. I think that might be one of them.
Probably was.
Ah, gotcha. So that's something for you guys to think about too, doing want to increase our garbage pickup to fifteen dollars. I'm gonna. Not good?
That I was gonna say, to keep it kind of across the board, if we do raise local, we might wanna think about raising. Montauk people. To manage others, to kind of be fair.
How many out of town people do we pick up?
I don't have it with me, but I've got it on my computer, I just don't know, right off the top of my head.
Give me an example of where we go out of town.
So it's optional for people that's out of town, so even though they could do it, they might not pick it up. Um like Florida circle, the peak, that's out of town, Buckhorn, Windswept. Um all the streets is awful Buckhorn, Slate Street.
Third.
Third Street is just, is Fifth Street, is some of Fifth Street out of town?
No.
No, okay.
Not for the ones that get picked up.
Okay.
So would you say there's more than fifty?
What's, what's the, the track that goes?
Yeah, probably.
Comes out of town just a little bit?
Hubble?
So.
What is it?
We go up towards Hubble.
Raise it a dollar.
On the other side of the road.
Fifty dollars a month, six hundred dollars a year.
That's the one.
There's Broadway, that goes that way, but I think there are some that are out of town.
So that's another for you guys to be thinking on. I'm not necessarily asking for complete like yes, no's right now, but these are things that I'm thinking on, that I need you all to think on. So I can get us moving forward in our budget.
I think when you, when you raise something, you need a justification, we're doing this because. And I think it's more well received if you explain why you're having to do this versus just, we're doing this.
When was the last garbage rate increase?
Last year.
We've been increasing garbage rate for a while.
I don't think I've been in on it, but that we did.
I wanna say it was. I wanna say it was twenty eighteen, nineteen, but now we, I think we increased some dumpster rates.
Yes, we did do that, that's what I.
The residential garbage, I wanna say it was like eighteen, nineteen.
Cost of everything's going up quite a bit since then.
I mean, gas. That would be the eighteen, nineteen year, like fiscal year, right? I think so. So that would have been before any of us were on council, except Dave.
Like, there's your justification.
That's true.
You just want to have a name for it, it's like, there's your justification.
What are our council fees?
It's like a quarter.
It must have been, because it was a jack yard, was the one that came off. A two yard dumpster is fourteen dollars, a four, did I say two? Two yard dumpster is fourteen, four yard is twenty-one fifty, six yard is twenty-six dollars, eight yard is thirty dollars per pickup.
Usually month, week.
And, and.
Most places.
Less guy water, even with the fee increase, cause that's, I've worked with Todd on that, cause at the dentist office, we've got, got one. Uh, yeah, even with that increase, it's still blowing the private guys out, out of the wire.
I mean, do you all want me to look at dumpster rates, raising dumpster rates? I mean, that's, that's mostly your businesses.
I mean.
We got.
Yeah, nothing wrong with looking.
If you could run a scenario where everybody gets a shave. Stretches it perhaps. With, with uh heavier weight on the out of town.
Especially the people that fly out of town.
But if you think about it, they're getting the out of town services, but they're not paying the personal property taxes or the property tax. You know, if you're in town, you're paying into all of that.
So less goes a lot more, so.
Yes, yeah.
Can we, can people be penalized, and this is a bad day for me to say this, cause my trash team went flying all over the hill today. Because of the wind, can we penalize people for not following the trash rules?
I mean, that's just a code enforcement thing, right, cause I mean, it's in the code.
What's an example?
Dogwood every Thursday. Every Thursday, people put trash bags out on the side of the road.
The night before.
The night before, and the code says, if I'm not mistaken, in a can with a lid the day of. I don't think you're supposed to be putting it out the night before.
So we can run that in the newsletter, the next newsletter that we do, and I mean, maybe we have people that's moved, they don't know that.
I put mine out this morning with the lids on and the wind.
Yeah.
Took it down to the bottom of the hill, but. I, like I see it, you know, every, every Thursday going down Dogwood, and it's the same, I'm not saying it's the same people, but. The folks on Dogwood came and complained about wild animals in here.
Oh, cause they were complaining about.
You know, wild animals, cause there's stray cats getting in trash, elephants, coyotes.
Well, there's also bears getting in trash.
Well, that too.
You had a bear getting in there, trash, hearts out of the huckles.
I thought that we service or we provide out of town garbage pickup for twenty-eight active accounts right now.
Look at you.
I totally synced up to my upstairs computer.
Now, say that one more time.
Twenty-eight active accounts.
Out of town.
Out of town.
Is that like residential, or is that everything?
It's residential.
Okay. I know that um all things damage out there on the 4 lane, I know that they were having garbage pickup. The only reason I know is cause they called and asked a question about it last week, or week before. Anyhow, so twenty.
If we raised it to thirty, we would gain it about ten thousand in a year. Just good for thought.
If we raise the out of town rate?
Yeah, cause right now it's twenty-five, so if you raised it to thirty a month, it would be over ten thousand dollars in a year.
I like Jonathan's idea though, you, you didn't have to have kind of a, a reason, and I, I understand the dump truck, or the. So new truck.
No, I mean, if we, if we haven't raised the residential rate since twenty eighteen, how much has gas increased since then?
And the wages of the, and the workers paying that up, I mean.
And you bought a new truck, but you were using the justification as a one percent, one point five percent increase as a possibility adjustment for all workers. So a hundred and eleven employees, I can't remember how many employees.
Probably not full-time employees, like that part-time, it's probably closer to like eighty, eighty-fiveish, full-time employees.
Yeah, I think last time we did this, about six months ago, it's about eighty-five or sixty people working full-time.
Have you projected out what that one point five would look like, across salaries?
I've gotten there, just because I didn't know where we were going, I've gotten there two point five. Because, you know, some people may get more, some people may get less, and. I think we're gonna have to have like a cap, like, I don't want somebody like, oh, Sally or Sam over here, they deserve like fifteen thousand dollars. Well, I think Sally and Sam's doing a great job, but I can't justify that.
Yeah, so cap, when you got caps on your paid bands for positions?
That's, that's what I, well, that's just like a cap for the raise.
Oh, okay.
So like, say if we did a, a one point five across the board, maybe we have to cap it at like three.
So you're setting a three percent raise.
Right.
You get everybody one point five, and then take the rest into a pool, and then assign that. Based off merit.
Yes.
And what's the figure? Come on.
I really don't know, I, I've, I've got literally all the, all of the budget covered.
So we don't know if raising the garbage rates would cover that, like, it's not just coming from one day? Okay.
Plus minimum wage, it's gonna go up in January or next year. It did, it went up to, uh, thirteen.
Twelve forty more.
That's a big number now. It was supposed to be thirteen fifty.
Well, that's, that's what I was thinking, like thirteen, and Susan's looking at it like, mm-hmm.
It was supposed to be thirteen fifty.
Yes, it made up the.
I mean, but what do we do? Do we bank on, oh, it's not gonna go to fifty, or do we go ahead and be like, and I don't, I don't know that we have that many people that's gonna be affected. I think most of our people are pretty. But I, I don't wanna not plan for that.
We need to plan for the seasonal workers too.
I was just gonna say mowers, mowers, weed eaters, that type of thing. Um, they were making fourteen dollars an hour last year. So I know that that would affect them, uh, lifeguard, all the park staff for the summer, it's gonna affect them. And that's, that could be a big hit. So I don't wanna not plan for it. And then hit us in the face. Okay, I'm gonna tag team with Jessica on this next one. And this is just a little bit, she's, she's got a presentation for you guys, if you're interested. This is just an if you're interested question right now.
I guess we need to know the subject.
Well, you, you hear the sound, it's right, that, that's, that's our cue.
That's fine, yeah.
So Jessica?
So we've been looking or looking at the option of charging a bank card transaction fee. You know, we have that benefit now to where we can take debit or credit cards. But we pay a lot to our merchants for these fees where we do this, and we do not charge that to our customers. Right now, in our budget that we allocated, it was thirty three thousand. We already can see, we're gonna go well over that. Right now, we're projecting to go to forty five thousand dollars just in processing fees. So if we can look at getting some of this back by charging that fee to the customer, convenience fee is what it's called. It'll offset that a little bit. And that's definitely something that we, we wanna see if you're interested in.
Yes. So she's got a whole presentation she can show you guys, we worked on some today, if you are interested.
It's not like this is groundbreaking, if you go to the courthouse and you pay with a credit card, they give you with. A fee based on what merchant you use and if the amount, whether it's either a percentage or a flat fee.
Right.
Courthouse charges four percent, I think, or four or not.
Yeah, something like that.
There's some more specifics that I wanna find out, I wanna find out, you know, what fee we're allowed to charge. Um, taxes is a little bit different, I don't think it can be a flat fee, like it could be for utility payments. So I wanna find specifics on the percentage that we're allowed, and then I'll, I'll give you the full presentation.
So you wanna do that at first budget?
Yeah.
Official budget for more?
So is that something you guys are interested in?
Change in numbers is always good. Just not thirty.
One of those gas station signs that is like, cash price, changes to their hard price.
I can definitely tell you that once COVID hit and the world shut down and nobody went out of their houses, people called and made those payments. And everybody was spoiled to call it and make those payments. So it's definitely increased, and we keep seeing it increase and increase and increase.
Last month, we did over six hundred transactions, just debit or credit cards. Over, what was it, like a hundred and thirty one thousand dollars that we took in. So it's something we wanna keep, we want that option, but we also wanna offset the cost of the processing fees on our end.
Courthouse is four percent, or if you do a flat fee, it doesn't exceed two dollars per transaction.
And on, correct me if I'm wrong on this one, like if you set it up on auto pay. How does the fee work with that?
There is no fee. That's definitely different.
That's actually, that's right.
So you create the incentive to go set it up on auto pay, you guys don't have to fill phone calls.
That's right.
It's, it's a good incentive to push business that way.
Very, very glad you used that word incentive, cause that's exactly what we used on the slide, incentive.
Well, I mean, a lot of businesses, you know, they're, they will give you a discount if you pay in cash. That discount's basically emergency.
Yeah.
How's it going?
Good, how you doing?
Doing well.
That is pretty much what I had. Does that have anything else for us?
Do we wanna? Well, that was, so part of the budget that we discussed was the Tassle Today budget. And we, at one point in time, we talked about the, the skeleton fact, the amount. And I'd sent a proposal to, to council about potentially looking at to hire like economic development community director, community development director. I'd heard a little feedback from some that, did you get, did you ever hear of the, to reach her? And never heard from Dave, so I don't know, so that's there, you know, definitely a sort of, sort of question.
I mean, I, that is going to be part of the budget, so I do have to know what you want to have to do.
What, when thinking about economic development, uh, development position, you know, one of the things I think about is your workload. We've had our meetings where we've laid out the targets that we wanna hit. Uh, if you're on the phone juggling, me not wanting to pay, like how can you, how can you accomplish? Eight, ten, twelve projects at a time? And speed is one of the things that I think, I mean, it's just a crazy question. Local government being involved in seeing just how long these processes take. And I think that we can get more accomplished quicker by allocating, making a change to our organizational chart. To free Ms. Leanna to focus on municipal tasks while we have an economic development coordinator. Focus on, uh, what we're focusing on, what we're saying our, 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 our mission sets gonna be, which is. Ways to increase local tax revenue by gaining attractions in our rural area. If we don't do, like add this position, my fear is, is that we just move even slower than we are. And I know that you all are working hard, and then you all work long hours, you're here at seven o'clock on a Tuesday. But there's only so much an individual can do. And we need to think strategically about the resources that we allocate to get the mission accomplished, just like we did with the police. Station purchase, like it's, it's a tool that's needed in order to get the mission accomplished. And that's the, that's the lens in which I'm viewing a position like this being added to the town's organizational chart. Somebody that the town manager can, can manage to make sure that the mission gets accomplished. So that's, that's what my head's at on. And you'd put some, with a bright amount in the next budget or access, you'd put some numbers together to show what that might look like?
I took into account like salary, um, like workers comp, like supplies, equipment, that type of things. I'm sure we'd actually like a new computer or something like that, just kinda start out. So I do have some of that in there. Um, depending on where we wanna go, is do I, do I need to do more during the scale of that? That type of thing, so I mean, I'll need some direction from you guys for that.
So what do we have to offer that we need at economic development?
What do we have to offer? So we identified our priorities, so we know we've got three point two million in funds that we currently have. We laid out our objectives that, uh, involve, uh, improving the lily fields, I mean, it's project management really is what it is. You got the lily fields, you have the, uh, mountain biking downhill, primitive camping at the grad. You've got the, uh, farmer's market construction. And then, uh, we also identified, and this may fall into the, the recreation directors' position. But improvements that we can share, uh, with primitive camping or cabins out there. You've got our Virginia Enterprise Zone incentives that I think need to be reviewed. We, we did a partial look at that through a subcommittee last summer. Um, so you've got your incentive structures, uh, structures that you have. We currently have an IEDA that can do some of that work. And our town code states that we can pay, so we don't pay them, like even though the town code says it can. But also, it's, it's as good as the, they're not full time employees, they're volunteers who're coming up to, uh, you know, put in some good work for the town. So the, the product that you're getting from committees like that, I think is suboptimal for actually making a continued progress. You have events that are coordinated through the town that would be facilitated through a position like this. I, I don't know, you tell me, is, is there enough to work for a full time job based on what you're seeing?
I mean, it would have to be.
You have grants that you'd be ready?
Mentioned grants, like there's a lot of grants that we're trying to get and on the table right now.
So they would be nice if they were granted, right, or awesome?
Yeah, that, that would be part of it, for anything economic development related. I mean, Leanne, uh, she's, she's about to get really busy with the water line project and the, uh, wastewater treatment facility project. And I could see her continuing because she has the historical knowledge of what's going on with those two infrastructure type projects. She has seen them through from, you know, beginning to end, but anything that comes to building the economy of the town would fall under, under this.
So basically, this would be allocated work probably into this economic developer, delegated work for her, where she could focus on other tasks.
Oh, yeah, a, a big part of it would be that, that, and work.
I have a question on this. Okay, so hiring an economic development director. Does not necessarily have anything to do with Tassle Today. Um, I know that that is a conflict of interest for me to participate in a conversation about Tassle Today. However, I don't know anything about this economic development director position that you all are talking about. And I feel left out of the loop.
Because it did, the initial, did if we take the funding from Tassle Today.
But here's the thing.
I don't think you can talk about this.
I know I can't talk about the funding for Tassle Today, but here's the thing, I cannot contribute to a conversation. I can still hear the conversation.
But if I'm sitting here, you're contributing to the conversation.
No, I'm not, not if I'm not talking. I can still hear the conversation unless you are in executive session specifically talking about what you are going to contribute to Tassle Today.
So this position is external to Tassle Today?
Correct.
Yeah. Tassle Today should still survive and still be someone that would run the events. This person would just manage that, would manage the events that are happening. That's what this person, because Leanne has to be careful what she can say and what she can do when it comes to events.
Right. I, I can, I can understand that, but I'm saying I am coming in blind because I knew absolutely nothing. About the possibility of hiring an economic development director, I have not seen any emails, I have not seen anything.
And when I created that email, that was because it was scurrying the lines of what could be a conflict of interest higher on the side of the county.
That needs to be run by Brad to see if that's something that I can hear at all. But unless you are talking specifically about what you are contributing to Tassle Today monetarily.
In my proposal, we wouldn't be. We wouldn't be.
Contributing nothing.
If they're doing an event for us, this person would have a budget that would allocate funding for that event. So it puts the control of events and economic development back in the hands of the town.
Okay.
But an economic developer wouldn't, you want that person to try to bring in jobs and like, you know, promote the businesses that are here. So you don't have the front porches and the chop houses shutting down.
Right.
I mean. I just feel. Tassle Today's over here at economic developers. You know, maybe I have a different view, but it, to me, it's completely different.
And I've thought about that too, that, but because like Tassle Today is kinda doing our main street, our main street businesses, supposed to be working with the businesses, so.
What you have there is you have the merchants association that was formed, and so then you would have three. So, you know, they have to make decisions to make.
Yeah, I think one of the, and, and this is, I don't know if it's. New info, I, I heard it recently, but one of the, one of the challenges like with the merchants, I think that they've had key figures set down. And same way with their IEDA, is that you have a group of volunteers, you're gonna give as good as those volunteers are for us as long as they want to do it. And then they're gonna bounce. And, um, uh, I don't know that you're necessarily gonna, you don't have longevity. You don't have operational control over that, you don't have control, it doesn't fall underneath the town manager. We've actually had a conflict where we, I don't, not hung up on that, cause I'm with you on this. I, I think that the focus should be, is like, how are we gonna recruit jobs? How do we recruit industry to here, how do we control our incentives so that they're better designed to keep up with how other than this value you're doing it? Focus is on economic development. And, you know, you kinda gotta model to follow with how the county facilitates that with their IEDA and Tim Danielson. But, um, but if the concern is having volunteer organizations that don't have a direct contract with the town. It's like, those organizations can still exist and should, I think it's great. But the, the fear that I have on those is the longevity that you have with it, based on volunteers. That's just one, you know, one item.
Yeah, and I feel like the counties let us down for years because they built an industrial park and we had nothing.
Yeah.
And then, you know, the last, with this paper, they come out and they say they have this company and they're gonna go into the park and they're gonna have an average pay of thirty to thirty five dollars an hour. It never happened. You know, so, you know, to me, it's like putting out a false hope.
So to create the economic development position?
I would have to look at what the counties, I mean, what town has, I can't remember his name.
Based, based on, so the jobs report that I pulled from Tim Danielson, um, from last year. It may have been last year or even last quarter, but he showed me a jobs report and it showed a hundred and eighty nine jobs created in the county.
Over the last year.
I'm not sure if it's, that's why I'm gonna be foggy, cause I pulled it, I think, for loop, looking to, to help go get grant money. But I do have that data. So there's some wins, I don't know, it's, everything's a VR campaign, it's like, how much you, you advertise it? But, um, they do have some success, does the success justify a salary? I'm not on the counter, so I don't have to, to weigh in on that.
Well, you know, you look at certain things like that project, John, and now Pure Salmon, we've been at this for ten years.
But we got some information on that. But what we, what we do, what we do have and what we've been focusing on, and I think that that's a great thing that we accomplished in our meeting, was it in the beginning of January? Is that we do have achievable targets that we can hit, and if you do have a position, even if it's four, five years. Based on these funding cycles, it takes about that long to get, get these things accomplished. There are two goal goals that can be delegated and accomplished with money that we already have, that would bring in attractions to the area. And part of my reason for being hung up on that is because, what's the alternative? Like, we don't have an alternative, we don't, we don't have industry connections to bring in, nor do we have like, like, I mean, power, uh, data centers are the, the big thing right now, but.
I'm glad we said that, I think, you know, we should reach out to Malcolm Brown. Malcolm, he's a little bit older than I am, but he's been through, and he's stuck with the mining industry. And he's been on Monarch Street for, um, how many years? And he's been doing that up some days, and I know we have to say where we recognize differences. He should recognize that, he's on the ground.
I like the meeting. Yeah, I'd like to be.
But I remember.
But, but for this position, based on the targets that we've identified, I do think that having an addition to your organizational chart would enable you to meet those targets sooner with the proper budget allocation. And that's, that's my push behind economic development in addition to the town. Because I want to see traction fast. Otherwise, I think, I think we'll be running status quo. I don't think that we're going to see tangible improvement within two years. I do think that we're pretty close on the farmers market. I think that that's one that we could get accomplished, hopefully, within two years. But otherwise, I think that our town manager does have too much to do on the daily operations.
Basically, multi-classed.
Yeah, based on looking at the sewer treatment facility upgrade, looking at the waterline project, looking at the daily management operations happening, and then particular people come in and visit during the day to complain about this, that, and the other. It's like, you have a long duty day. Can you achieve these targets we want to hit in addition to doing your day-to-day? And the answer is yes. Hey, that's great, but if you need more bandwidth, this is a way to do that.
So economic drives in our town, right? We've got this more TASM project that's really going to get taken pretty soon. And our building block is our farmers market. We had a meeting yesterday about the more TASM utilization project. One of the things that we're going to have to do, we're going to have to find businesses and find people who are interested and invested and coming down here. And so economic development, like find companies, court the companies, see what you can get on here, go visit them. Like, I can, I can do this, but does it take the time out of my day? It is. I mean, can I do it and do it well with everything else? I will give it my best. But if we have somebody dedicated to going and finding business to come up there, I mean, if they can, if they can devote a hundred percent, I mean, I do have other projects going, but I will give it my best if that's where we're going.
My recommendation would be to build it into the, into the budget if feasible. But does that really need, like, I mean, it's creation, you're in charge of personnel issues, but I can see the difficult position, but I am also just a councilperson, you know, out here. Everybody, you guys, and your thoughts.
So we've got a public hearing that starts right now.
So.
What's that?
So you just filibustered. Filibuster or grandstand, my lord? Uh, where's the, the website, right, Lori? Okay, we are going to adjourn the public discussion. Now, we're going to call the orders of public hearing. On Tuesday, the eleventh of February, twenty twenty-five, the Council of the Town of TASM will conduct a public hearing on the proposed issuance of one or more series of general obligation water and sewer bonds of the Town of TASM in the estimated maximum principal amount of fifteen thousand, or fifteen million five hundred thousand. What is that? The purpose of the proposed bonds, together with other available funds, are A to finance improvements to the town's water and wastewater system, including without limitation, one, water line replacement, two, the development of an asset management plan, three, wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation, and four, related expenses, and B, the pay costs associated with the issuing of such bonds. In addition to the pledge of the town's full faith and credit to the repayment of the bonds, the town may also pledge net revenues from its water and sewer systems. The public hearing, which may be continued or adjourned, will be in addition to the pledge of the town's full faith and credit to repayment of the bonds, the town may also pledge net revenues from its water and sewer system. The public hearing, which may be continued or adjourned, will be conducted at seven o'clock PM in the Town Council chambers, TASM Municipal Building, two one one Central Avenue, TASM Virginia, two four six five one. Interested persons may appear at such time and place and present their views. Anybody want to come up and present their views on the proposed issuance of one or more series of general obligation water and sewer bonds? All right, since no one's here to speak for that, I guess we have ten minutes to kill before the next one. So we're going to call our second public hearing. This public hearing is the Shipping Container Ornaments Amendment. Notice of public hearings, pursue it to Virginia Code Section fifteen dot two dash zero four, zero, or two two zero four, volume two zero one eight, and Section twenty-three dash six of the Code of the Town of TASM, Virginia. Notice is hereby given that on Tuesday, February eleventh, twenty twenty-five, at seven fifteen, in the council chambers of the municipal building for the Town of TASM located at two one one Central Avenue, TASM, Virginia, two four six five one. The Town Council and the Town Planning Commission will hold a joint public hearing to provide the citizens of TASM, Virginia, an opportunity to be heard with respect to a proposal to admit, amend Section twenty-three dash one of the Code of the Town of TASM specifically concerning the definition addition for shipping containers to the town code. The full text of the proposed amended ordinance is available for review and inspection during normal business hours at the Town of TASM Municipal Building as referenced herein above. So anyone from the public?
Speak in favor of this.
Yes, anybody to speak in favor against the proposed change? I don't see anybody busting through the door, so we're going to adjourn this public hearing. The public meeting will start at seven thirty. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call the regular Town Council meeting to order. It stands for the pledge of legal and ethical integrity.
Ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Manager Reagan, you want to come in?
Let's pray, please. Dear, thank you for this day and all that you've done. Thank you for keeping us safe as the bad weather has shown its face again today. And we pray that you'll be with each and everyone here as they travel back home. We ask you to please be with our council tonight. Please let them make the decisions in the best interest of the town always. We ask you to please be with us, guide us, direct us to a new level, pray. Amen.
All right, please be seated. So first on the agenda, the special presentation request will give Renee Goddard Perkins a minute to take her coat off. Yes, nothing like right walking in.
Exactly. Hello, how's everyone? It's good to see you all.
Ms. Goddard Perkins is going to give us a Black History presentation or discussion.
Oh, thank you. You know, that is not what I, I, I didn't know that it was going to be on Black History.
It's okay.
Okay.
Whatever you want to tell us.
I, I was going to talk about the test center.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Of course.
All right. I'm so sorry that I was not told the Black History presentation. I do apologize.
Quite all right.
All right, so good evening, and thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to come here and share with you all a little information about the TASM test center, which has been open now for about three and a half years. My name is Ethel Hallmark Perkins, and I am the owner of the TASM test center. And this, the business, the TASM test center is a business that offers state-of-the-art professional testing services for a variety of clients. Our mission is to provide a reliable test monitoring service adhering to a strict code of ethics regarding all test material. We facilitate and profit exam sessions to clients in a controlled environment that cultivates integrity. Our business is conducted in a professional, courteous, and timely manner. So why are testings needed? I'm glad you might have, glad you asked me that. Professional testing services are an integral tool used by businesses to access the skills and knowledge of potential applicants. Companies continue to place value in the integrity of their screening process. Many governments and private sector business depend on licensed testing centers to offer a secure testing environment, and this actually augments their hiring process. The testing center prevents cheating and ensures exam integrity. It provides a standardized and fair testing environment. It meets compliance requirements, and it offers a convenience for students and professionals. In addition to proctoring, the TASM test center is used by some companies as an I-I, a processing facility. So our proctors actually act as processing agents. Verifying documents, new hire employees must present for validation of their US work eligibility. And we also now offer a fingerprinting service through Field Print. And some people have also asked what qualified me to open this business. And so I'll just tell you guys a little bit about my experience. I worked for the US Postal Service as a quality of work-life coordinator. And there I provided training for all personnel, and it was a process that the postal service implemented to try and improve relations between craft and management. And then I administered the civil services exam for the state of West Virginia from two thousand and four to two thousand and seven. Then for Dish Network, I worked as a travel trainer. I traveled all over the United States, and they sent me on numerous occasions to Manila, Leon in Mexico City, Mexico, and of course, all over the United States. And just traveling and training new employees and existing employees that work for Dish. Finally, I wanted to just tell you all a little bit about some of the exams that we administer. So we're doing all of the contractors exams, and I had no idea there were so many. I think I counted about thirty-six just specialty contractor exams. We have administered Waterworks, Wastewater, TIA, Evaluation Systems, of course, that's the teaching credential. We've administered exams for the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, Microsoft, the FBI, IRS. We've done the nurse practitioner exam and stormwater management inspector, erosion and sediment exams, the US Secret Service, West Virginia and Virginia Real Estate, and Virginia Cosmetology, and TSA and Microsoft, and there's others as well. We would love to expand the business and offer a court-ordered driving school eventually, and also proctoring for the, the local colleges. Okay, does anyone have any questions?
Where, where are you located?
We're located inside the Chamber building on Chamber Drive.
Ms. Perkins, you said fingerprinting, do you do the ink?
No, sir, it's electronic. Yes, sir, it's electronic.
And the reason I'm asking is there's hardly anybody that does the ink roll anymore.
Yes.
And employment, we get it all the time for, and we don't do the ink roll anymore, so.
Right. So, so people are still requesting the ink roll, you're saying?
A lot of these employers, especially for the government jobs, is requiring them to do the ink roll.
Yeah.
If that's something, I would be more than glad to start referring those to you because I don't want to be referring to.
So the police department, they don't do it anymore?
They're doing electronic, and it's not inked.
Yeah, well, I can actually look into that and find out and see maybe that could be another. Yes, exactly, I've had the idea of it as well, yes, sir. All right, well, thank you all, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the individuals with item B have postponed until next month, and the same with item C. So we're going to jump into Back of the Dragon event request.
I'm Deborah Backing. So I'm Beth Tackich, here for Back of the Dragon and our partners, OTR. And I first want to start with, oh my gosh, this major award that we won from Virginia Tourism for OTR last year, it's Excellence in Tourism Partners Outstanding Festival of the Year. So this is your all's award too, and the Town of TASM, because of course, Back of the Dragon is TASM, and OTR is Back of the Dragon's biggest event of the year, and we couldn't do it without you guys. So again, we are asking for a sponsorship with you guys. The, it actually goes towards OTR, their company, not, not to Back of the Dragon. But we are asking for a, another sponsorship this year. This will be our fourth year, putting on OTR, which is a car and motorcycle rally. We have a lot of music, stunt shows, food trucks. It's just a, just a fun time at Back of the Dragon, here on Main Street. And we, we've shown awesome growth throughout the years that we have been doing it. I think we had the, we were, it was cool, we got some, some fun data from the Pacer AI through the demo. So in twenty, in two thousand and twenty-three, that Saturday for OTR, which is June tenth, they showed about twenty-one hundred people at Back of the Dragon. And then June eighth, the following year, that, that Saturday, the main day of OTR, showed three thousand six hundred people at Back of the Dragon. So we showed, we showed some growth there. We're super excited for two thousand and twenty-five, of course. I also was a, we were, Back of the Dragon actually was awarded a grant through VTC this year for marketing, which, which is awesome, so yay. And so what they really want to do is a match grant. So they want us to promote more than two hours away. Because they, what they really want is, is folks to come and eat at least two meals and hopefully stay overnight. So, and we want that too. So, so that's the main purpose of, of, you know, what we're trying to do here is trying to get folks from, of course, our region to come and have a great time, it's again, it's a free event. But we also want folks to come from outside of our region and to experience the beauty and awesomeness that is TASM and Back of the Dragon, of course. Another cool thing about OTR is that they actually are out of North Carolina. So they, they bring, again, out of region things to us, sponsorships that they can get. Peanut Patch is one of them. Last year, we had Full Throttle with us, which is another big name. We're trying to pull bigger names as we get more and more folks. So we have a concentrated customer base that is into motors, anything that has motor in it. So we can really show other sponsors, bigger sponsors, you know, whether, of course, at Harley, our local Harley dealerships, Cole and Light. Um, so what we're trying to do is, is again, for more and more sponsorships, um, and more and more partners, uh, like that. So, so we're super excited.
So one thing is, um, Back of the Dragon has put in an event application for us and it's in your packet. The dates of the event, June sixth, seventh, and eighth. Um, and because there will be a street closure needed and there will be alcohol served, this event request comes before you all to allow us to shut down the road and to have alcohol at the event. Um, normally if it's one that does not have alcohol or something, I can approve that, but we would just like, we'd like to coverage the, uh, so that you approve. So that, that would be step one. How would you manage to approve the event?
I'll second. I just want to make sure we don't have any conflicts, right?
There is nothing else on the schedule.
What day is the road normally closed?
So it's going to be a rinse and repeat of last year pretty much. Um, so what we do is that Friday, uh, we come in, it's usually around noon, and then, uh, we have some work that Friday evening. Saturday is all day, so it's nine AM to nine PM. Um, and then Sunday, it's just part of the morning, um, because the end of the event is pretty much a send off from Back of the Dragon to the Blessing of the Bikes and Book Garden. Um, so it's just from like nine AM to eleven and that's, I don't think, no, you know, I don't think we even closed the street.
We, I don't think you.
Yeah, I don't think we did, because we got everything situated that night. We had to get stuff done so that, because again, we are, we are very understanding of our town personnel, our police, our fire, EMS, uh, the town workers, uh, we're very appreciative. Uh, it's, it's an amazing thing to watch everybody come together and get this incredible event off the ground. So we're, we're very cautious of their time and we don't fool around, so.
And the street is closed, so just, uh?
Yes, so it's just the west part. Um, so all of, all of Upper Main Street or, or Lower, uh, uh, historic Main Street is, is open. Uh, and, uh, again, part of this is to push folks up there. Not everybody wants to eat out of their food truck, but I, you know, I don't either. I want to be sitting down in a camper. So, uh, so we, we, hey, guys, you know, there's all kinds of, just over that hill, there's all kinds of restaurants and, and, uh, fun boutiques to look at and, uh, and good times. And we hear that, um, and, uh, and actually, you know, Mills Tac show that, you know, folks really do come to Tazewell and, uh, because of this event and other things that we do and, and, uh, and share their, uh, share their money with us, so we appreciate that.
Can we sure we get proper notification to the businesses?
We have a system called Dixil Alert and we can put it out through Dixil and we can also message on our website and Facebook. And we can put it in our newsletter.
Yes, yeah, last year it was in the, the Water Bill. Yeah, so that, that was awesome. We do go around and we, I just, this is, you know, I go, hey, guys, you know, um, and it is, it is everywhere, so.
Are there any events on that, the Lily Fields or any, and Playmores or anything like that?
Um, well, we, we've talked about that, um, and, and we, we're, um, we do cornhole. Um, so last year we did a cornhole tournament and that was super fun. Um, and we would, yes, we would like to, uh, put, put a few more bikes around and, uh, do some things very gently, of course, because folks, listen, we, they mess with their bikes either, okay? So, uh, so, uh, they're, you know, so, uh, so yeah, there's, there's some things that we would, we would love to do, uh, and kind of, we're always looking to expand the event and bring more. Um, of course, uh, we do all the steps and stuff on our property, um, so that there's not any damage anywhere.
Well, the reason I was asking, because I'm pretty sure Lily Baseball, they're, they're in All-Stars at that time, that thing. And just that may be another person to de-convocate with.
Of course, we, we always do that. Um, there, there hasn't been an issue. Um, again, we try to be good neighbors.
Excellent.
Yeah.
So I've got a second. Any additional discussion? Since we kind of skipped that.
And this is for the approving the event.
Correct. So all in favor of approving the OTR Back of the Dragon event, say so by saying aye. All opposed, say so by saying nay. All right.
Just the event, is that the best?
I think that was, so now.
So that was the event.
Right now we need to.
And she has also asked for a sponsorship. Um, last year you all did do a sponsorship of ten thousand dollars.
Are there sponsorship levels?
Um, not really. Um, so, so again, we, we do have partners, um, and actually, if I may approach the name.
Sure.
Uh, these are kind of, this is kind of part like what we do. Um, okay. So, and these go out. So this actually, uh, was, uh, produced, um, mainly to go, we went to Full Throttle Show down in Greensboro, North Carolina. Um, so it's like, it's a magazine, full volume magazine, and, um, so we're going to be sponsored, actually, we're going to do something with them too. Um, but everything that we do has, uh, the Tazewell logo, um, in it. Um, and everything that we, so, uh, we also do like a live remote, um, with J104, um, everything that we say, say, you know, of course, because it's true. We're like, thank you town of Tazewell, thank you leadership, thank you all the workers and stuff that make this possible, because we wouldn't be able to do this, uh, you know, without you guys. So, I mean, again, it's, it's so interconnected, the town of Tazewell and Back of the Dragon that we could not, you know.
And, and this, this request is from OTR.
This request from OTR. This is not, this is not maybe that, that goes to, to Back of the Dragon, um, it goes to OTR. And again, it's a free event. Um, and what this does, this helps us, uh, be able to, uh, you know, get the live music and the acts and the, uh, stunt shows, entertainment and that kind of thing. Um, you know, uh, this is, this is not a mood making event. Like, you know, all these people, but, um, this is really, what, what this does is, um, this gets more and more promotion of Back of the Dragon, of, uh, what we can do there, um, for sponsorships.
For normal months, man.
Well, it's, it's kind of wash.
With the, uh, what was the number on the increase of visitors from, what was it, twenty-three to twenty-four?
It was, uh, it was twenty-one to thirty-six.
Twenty-nine, yeah.
Yeah.
Fifteen hundred and thirty. The, uh, would, you said you, you have an advertising grant for this event also?
Yes.
So we, could we, are we going to be, uh, featured on that advertising?
Oh, yes, yes. So that's part of it. So what you have in your hand right there is, is part of that. So, and again, if you go on our website, backofdragon.com/otr, uh, you, you will see that, uh, that you're on there too, of course. Uh, everything's on there, um, the videos, everything, uh, we'll, we'll have a load of it on there.
All right. Last year when we were talking about it, you know, I, I think you, you measured things that, that have tangible improvement. This is clearly showing measured improvement and does a good job of advertising for the town, you know, featuring one of the, the assets that we have to bring folks into town. Helps out folks with Airbnbs, helps out the, uh, the restaurants. Uh, we, I had stated last year, you know, I'd like to, to test this, you know, for a period of like five years, so we're on year four, I, I'd make the motion to approve this.
I'll second.
I've got a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the ten thousand dollar request, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say so by saying nay.
Nay.
The motion carries. Thank you. You just look, seem so happy up there.
Oh, hey, guys, I'm pumped. It's, we're, it's going to be awesome.
In that case, can I come back?
Yeah. So, uh, next on the, the agenda is the Virginia Cooperative Extension, Hattie County Four-H Camp Support Request. Uh, Commander Reagan?
We have received a donation request from the Four-H Camp. It is Virginia Cooperative Extension. Um, there will be a hundred and twenty-five campers set to attend this event. It's a five-day event. Um, the cost is two hundred and forty-five dollars per camper. Last year, there was a donation made of four hundred dollars.
Do you know how many campers there are going?
I think the request is a hundred and twenty, but it doesn't specify how many people from Tazewell, Town of Tazewell.
It does not. And it's, it's all of Tazewell County that goes to that camp. I will say that I am going to withdraw myself from, um, discussing this and voting on this because my kid's going to that camp. Or kid. There's only one, it's all enough.
Let's see, uh, give me one second. I'm trying to look something up here.
Are you looking for the break?
Yeah, I had to go back to the top ten or, uh, guidelines.
Yeah, it's on the request too.
Uh, so, the, the application says a hundred and twenty-five people servicing all three areas of Tazewell County. So, or I guess four areas, including, I'm going to say Town of Tazewell. We fall into the eleven to fifty range, so based upon guidelines, the four hundred dollar donation still fits. And I'd be willing to donate four hundred dollars in, so I'll make the motion to donate four hundred dollars.
We've got a motion for four hundred. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I've got a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the four hundred dollar donation to, uh, Tazewell County Four-H, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say so by saying nay. Okay, motion carries. All right, next, uh, so the, the governor of Virginia has, uh, designated February as School Board Appreciation Month. I'm going to, uh, read some of the, the certificate of recognition from the school board, or from the governor, sorry. So School Board Appreciation Month. Whereas school board members are elected or appointed to represent the interest of students, teachers, parents, and other stakeholders. And whereas school board members play a vital role in ensuring that students across the Commonwealth have access to high-quality, rigorous education and are best positioned to uphold educational excellence in Virginia schools. And whereas school boards are the governing bodies responsible for oversight, success, transparency, effectiveness, and outcome of school systems across the Commonwealth. And whereas local school board members work for their community's parents, businesses, educational professionals, and other community members to execute a shared vision of success for students. And whereas this, these decisions affect the present and future lives of children and chart a path to prepare all students to be productive workers in the Virginia economy, informed and engaged citizens in their pluralistic democracy, and responsible and good neighbors in our communities. And whereas School Board Appreciation Month, uh, does the contribution, dedication, and service of Virginia local school board members. That, uh, Governor Yonkin recognized February twenty twenty-five as School Board Member Appreciation Month, and we are fortunate to have our two, uh, local representatives here, Ms. Irene Mullins and Mr. David Woodard. If you'd like to come up and be recognized, we have some, uh, some gifts too.
We would like to say thank you all very much, but also, uh, David and I and the whole board, every month, we thank the Town of Tazewell for something that you all have done for some of their schools and some of their students.
Because it floods every month in Richland. And you all help us more than the town of Richland does.
But you've also helped us in Woodville and Tazewell as well. And we appreciate you all being good neighbors. It makes us happy to be part of the town that will do that. So thank you all very much.
Get back to you, Susan.
Yeah, my, my, we're, I told, I told Dr. Stacy, by the way, we're also not the ones that call school office, so don't. We, we told Dr. Stacy to look in the bin while there's big pumps, so we may as well.
You're going to use it.
Yeah.
But, uh, Ms. Susan's going to take some pictures.
Oh, 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 I got you. And some parting gifts. Wouldn't be right if you didn't get a, a bulldog stress ball.
I need to squeeze a few.
Your mother, thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
My wife has a stress ball, so.
So moving right along, next on the agenda is the accessibility for people with disabilities. Uh, Mr. Howie Mitchell.
Of course, I'm Howie and the boss is Back of the. He knows he's boss because I'm the boss here. Uh, we just have, uh, noticed some things about the street system that we'd like to draw attention to and see if we can get some things worked out for everybody. This is not an advertisement for sheets, even though I will tell you, when you travel with two women, my mom and Kathy, we figure out where there are very clean restrooms and sheets always have great restrooms. But the reason that I have this up here, we were out in Mount area about two weeks ago and mom and Kathy had went in to use the bathroom and dad and I were standing beside the van and there was a gentleman pumping gas. And he caught my attention, uh, basically because he only had one leg and he was in a wheelchair. And he pumped his gas, got out of his truck, pumped his gas, and he was coming to the door. So I just went over and opened the door and I noticed when he went through the next set, somebody was there to open the door. We got in the van and was starting to leave and I just happened to look over and he was coming out and there was people opening the door. So, you know, we can be good humans and it doesn't take very much, but that's the reason I stuck sheets up there. Now, my daughter, she did not like that, but that's okay because she's not here. Uh, not wanting to go through all the, the disability stuff, the only thing I wanted to do was, you know, kind of, uh, the ADA stops discrimination, uh, it allows that all facilities are going to be used by everyone and it, and it fosters inclusion, which is something we should be doing anyway, okay? And it also, uh, promotes independence and confidence. It, uh, makes sure that everybody has access, no matter what physical abilities they have. And it does stuff with social inclusion and community engagement, which is extremely important. Folks that are in wheelchairs, a lot of times have barriers. The more barriers, the less interaction they have with society. And that's not the perfect life. So most people never experience the opportunity to assist a person in wheelchair. Let me think about it. How, how many of you guys have been able to push folks around? That was not something I did. I taught school and wasn't, I mean, I had, I'd helped with Kathy's mother who was in a wheelchair when we met, but I haven't done much with wheelchairs. But I'm an expert now, okay? So this is, this is where we're going. Uh, hopefully, this is going to provide the highlights for the potential opportunity to enhance our town for the experience that visitors will have and also to make it more open access for the folks who live here already. On the west end of Main Street, if you're in a wheelchair and you're coming down this lane, you got nowhere to go. You either try to go right onto the road and there's about a six-inch concrete slab there, or you turn the other direction and go down the hill that the sidewalk starts. So accessibility to that part of the town is. So accessibility to that part of the town is pretty much nonexistent. And I've got a couple shots on it, just to give you different views. And there's the slab that would, would keep you to go. And, and some of these things, uh, they're not things that we just went down through town trying to pick out problems. Please don't think that. These are things that we have noticed when our individuals get out, and they, one of the things that they love to do in the summer is go down the street. Sometimes they make it to the board supervisor, sometimes they make it to the post office, you know, that they're out. And Kathy and I both feel that it's kind of one of the responsibilities that we have to, to make sure that they're able to make the loop or to make as far as they want to go. Uh, the old National Bank. This one, I did not know that there was a problem, and if you look, there's not really anything that's wrong. Besides, you know, there's big concrete that doesn't match, which means that probably water line or something that was sitting, but that's, you know, repairs happen. But we were actually, Kathy and I were actually eating in Mom's restaurant, and our folks come down the street. And when they got to this section, one of the girls could not push the wheelchair. And the reason is, there's about an inch difference. So when you hit that with a wheelchair, unless you've got up some speed, you can't go across it. Uh, this one I put it because I thought it was cute. It looks like somebody's moved the mailbox, because you can tell. Somebody has tried to create a path for a wheelchair to go around, but then somebody come and moved the mailbox, so it's not very, uh, handy. Uh, these two parking places, and it's something that could be easily fixed, and this is also another thing that we noticed when we were eating in the restaurant. They're both are exactly the same. They both have handicap symbols. But if you pull a car in and get a wheelchair out, you can't make it to the sidewalk because the car blocks the way to get onto the sidewalk. And we did not know that until one of our friends who is in a wheelchair came to eat with us, and when he got out of the car, he couldn't make it to the sidewalk. So basically, I just went out and stood in the road and made sure he got across before traffic. Uh, this is Central Avenue going down by board supervisors. I think if you've ever rode in a wheelchair, or if you've ever thought about it, going across uneven surfaces is not the funnest thing to do. With this one, it's, it's kind of okay because it's, it slabs of concrete. Uh, but with, with each of those cracks, wheels tend to get stuck, or they go into them, and it takes a little bit more effort to get them out. Uh, one of the girls was actually pushing, and I think the wheel got stuck and the wheelchair tilted forward, which the person should fall out. So it's just parts of our sidewalk system that we think maybe need to be upgraded, just for safety concerns. Aw, man, I thought I got all the mistakes out of this. Sorry, that G is stuck right there by the side. This is Marion Avenue, uh, the turn up by the old flower shop that we used to, to work at. If you notice, the crosswalk is coming across. If you're in a wheelchair, you don't know where to go. You have to go out into the road, or go across Marion Avenue. Okay. The third thing is, if you come down Marion Avenue, where the flower shop is, there's actually a section of concrete that's built to keep water from draining into the basement. But wheelchairs cannot go over that. So that means if a wheelchair is going down that section of the sidewalk, they have to cross over the road to go across. Which our individuals, we don't have a, we don't have a ramp in front of the business now where we're at, so they have to go through the sheriff's partner. So anytime they go downtown, this is the direction that they go. And that's just the, the way they end up, okay, if you're going down the street. So this is, this is the end of what, uh, what presentation we've kind of fixed up. But we want you to remember that you, you need to, everyone needs to take moments to, to kind of enjoy the journey that they've embarked on. And to envision all of the doors that's open for you, because there's been many for many. Okay? And during this journey, there's always choices to be made, and there's always, could I do this to do a better job, or can I do this just to slide by? And so in our built environment reflects our values, then every barrier is a statement about who is excluded. Let's open doors to ensure every person belongs and enjoys their journey. And so we got these doors, and we've had great things because we ended up here, or it should come, there it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add something? Um, the spot up there where the flower shop is, there's plans to address that already, that part. Um, I, I did not realize that it had a hindrance there, but there was plans before this to, to fix that part.
Yeah, I know, uh, the previous mayor, Donnie, had talked to me about some changes we're gonna make.
Look, we're gonna mill up the road and fix the sidewalk and, and fix the pavement through there too. So that, it was, it was planned for that part.
Can I claim success when that starts happening?
You can.
And I'll tell you a bit less when we're going in and working on our budget, so you planned that just right.
All right, so next on our agenda is, uh, local business representation. We have none scheduled. So, uh, next, uh, the approval of the minutes for the special call council meeting on January seventh, twenty twenty-five, and the council meeting on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Do you understand the motion to approve?
Make a motion. Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Got a second. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the minutes for the special call council meeting on January seventh, twenty twenty-five, and the council meeting on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Thanks everybody.
Aye.
All opposed. Thanks everybody. All right, motion carries. Next is the approval of financial statements and the financial report for January twenty twenty-five. Do you understand the motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
Got a second. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the financial statements and financial report for twenty twenty-five. Thanks everybody. All opposed. Thanks everybody. All right, motion carries. Next is the committee and conference updates. So, uh, finance commission committee, Councilmember Davis.
Uh, the finance commission met last Monday, and we had some plans just to look at really of the Tassell Community Health Foundation building. Um, there wasn't anybody presenting anything. We weren't asking anything. It was just here to look at. Um, we also had a discussion on the adding the shipping container definition as an approved use in M one. And that was suggested that, or suggested it was passed that we send that up to council to set a public hearing.
Splish.
And that's later on.
And that's what?
It's C.
No, okay.
It's in there.
Literal.
Yeah. Um, that's it.
Any questions? Okay, next our IEDA chairperson, Ms. Spivey's gonna give us an update.
Hello, everyone. Happy February. Making the most of the bad weather outside. Um, so as per usual, I'm here for our semi-regular IEDA update. We met last Monday. Um, and the bulk of our ongoing project that's most time-consuming at the moment is the farmers market. So I'm gonna take a couple minutes to kind of catch you up on what our plans are, how we've been working with Leanne and Susan. Um, and then I also come back later. We did not. So, um, as you all know, you have designated fifty thousand dollars for us to be able to receive a preliminary architecture, architecture report from Thompson and Litten. That is going to be turned back and given to us as a finished product on February eighteenth. We had a meeting last week to kind of look over their, answer their questions. Um, and we have asked them to, you know, try to give us what's part of our conceptual drawings that we had, um, through our planning work, through the DEQ and Zantec. And remember, all of that work, that community event, um, in October, was all based upon, um, a grant that we received from the DEQ and a continued partnership with Zantec. So, uh, no cost to the town, but was really fun, and it was great to engage with the farmers markets, the association, and our North Passel community. Um, so with that said, um, at the end of February, February twenty-seventh is the due date. We are going to submit an application to the tobacco commission. Uh, based upon what is in our preliminary architecture report, report, our goal is to face this project so that we can achieve funding to at least have a structure built um, on our existing concrete slab, we would hope, before the end of the year, if everything goes our way. So the thing with the tobacco commission grant is it does require a one-to-one match. And they do not allow more than twenty-five percent as an in-kind contribution, which means we will need, um, a cash contribution from you all. So with that in mind, we are trying to be conservative, and so we are probably going to ask the tobacco commission for fifty thousand dollars. So that would mean, we would need thirty-seven thousand five hundred. We do think we are going to have some change from the original amount that you allotted to Thompson and Litten. Um, Leanne's in discussion with them about their final price. Um, so that's something to consider. Um, at the end of, when I come back and we look at the resolution, there is a line where you all will tell us a, a dollar match amount. If you're ready to do that tonight. Um, next thing, we also, we've worked with Jordan Dillon at our, uh, the Cumberland Plateau Planning District, and, uh, contacted with the DHTD Kelly. We've had two meetings with them, kind of about how we can be strategic and have the farmers market pavilion basically be the catalyst for the North Passel revitalization, as there's an ongoing planning grant happening down in that area right now anyway. So, um, they have told us that the more we are able to achieve and get done in that area of town, it's only going to enhance whatever applications, um, the town will be able to apply for and feature. So we've charted out our next steps. We're also going to apply for a T-Mobile grant, which is fifty thousand dollars. That does not have matching funds attached. Um, we would think both of those, we will hopefully hear back by May or June. And then at that point, our next steps would be, uh, the C Prop funds would be open, um, and that would be fifty thousand dollars, which as long as everyone's in agreement, um, will be given. Um, and then the last thing that we'll, we're gonna be looking at in that spring, fall area is the USDA. So we're going to try to get funding anywhere from fifty thousand dollars up to two hundred thousand dollars, uh, for the farmers market with grant applications. Then that's just this calendar year. Obviously, grants can say no, and we will keep trying. Um, but that's what we're doing. So good news is, we've gathered lots of letters of support. Um, our farmers market, um, commission has been in contact with us about, and given us kind of metrics that we can use in our application, so we can be quantitative, um, and have like deliverable goals at the end. Um, I think that's it with farmers market, right? Okay, so the too-long-didn't-read version is, we are really excited about this project still. We're thankful for your support and for letting us make decisions with, uh, an IEDA property. And we really think that it's gonna become kind of the centerpiece of the community and the North Passwell warehouse district as we're gonna start calling it for our future applications. Any questions?
So being conservative, I mean, you all came back from Richmond, uh, you know, this month, and I could not open up the flyer that you, that you had, so I gotta get it on a better computer. But I, my question's on the fifty thousand dollar ask, is does that stem from conversations that imagine like that's a reasonable figure? Are we undershooting this where we could potentially get more money than if we were willing to match at a higher rate to get this project done? Hopefully so.
I just get nervous asking for money. So I know for me, when we talked about money, we were like, well, go look.
And so we were trying to be conservative. Um, you all have allocated fifty thousand dollars. The P A R front tops of the list will cost thirty-seven. So we actually need thirty-seven five for the match if we match fifty. Um, so if we were allowed to keep the change, that would be thirteen thousand toward thirty-seven X. Um, and again, like, just because we approved this, just because we applied for this grant, it doesn't mean we're getting the funds this budget year either. Uh, it's very well possible that it will be the next budget year, so we have some jobs in the budget for that if you all would choose to do so. We're trying to be very conservative with our asks.
And I guess we don't have the total project, like, asking.
We really hope we would buy this meeting, but we saw something.
Is that what, is that what you do on the eighteenth?
Yes, that's what we're getting back. We would have that.
The permission is due ten days later?
The twenty-seventh, yes.
So maybe that could help drive, you know, what, whatever they come back with as a cost, maybe we adjust their numbers if councils agree.
We asked them to help us face it. So they'll have an itemized, um, total cost. But then we will be able to take our P A R and say, we're asking you to help us get this first chunk. Then the next thing we apply for, your all's funds are gonna help with this chunk.
Now, is that, that matches a two-to-one match?
A one-to-one.
One-to-one?
Yeah.
So if we're asking the tobacco gition to give us fifty, then we have to match fifty?
But they allow twenty-five in common.
Oh, twenty-five in common. Okay, gotcha.
We're very committed to, to seeing this project through.
Correct. I mean, I know I'll speak for myself. I think I can speak for Kara.
You can.
Okay. We would love to see this project built.
Yes, yeah.
And we would love to be able to have something in North Tassell to make them feel like they are part of the community, because we have heard that they feel forgotten. So if we can get this stepping stone, this building block in their community, that's all we're on.
And it is gonna help our farmers market association, um, their, this current, um, season, that's gonna start in May, they're still gonna eat a lot of the rainies a lot, as they've done in the past. But I think they're only gonna target one market day, just to help their producers be consistent. So we see giving them a set space, they're gonna be able to market it better, their producer, you know, they're, we're gonna be able to help them grow. Uh, the current leadership, their, um, long-term goal is to have thirty consistent producers available at the market each market day. Um, and that would be a huge improvement with what they've seen. And that's, you know, their numbers, um, that, that they've helped us.
So I know we don't have final numbers. Do we have ballpark figures as far as total cost of the project?
So if we're thinking just phasing and structure, I mean, no contract, but surely we can get something built for fifty and thirty, eighty-seven. I mean, surely we can get something under roof, right? Now, will it have the, the bathroom? Will it have the prep kitchen? Will it have, prep kitchen is small, like, no stove zone, nothing like that. Will it have the sliding doors that, that have been, you know, put on the drawings from dialogue design? No, it may not have that, and that's okay. We can face that, and we can ask for another grant at another time. But get it under roof, get our farmers market down there, have a visible symbol of the progress that we're making.
My fear is only that, that maybe you're undershooting on the, the grant request.
I mean, if you, if you think we should ask for more, we're glad to do so.
We have to.
When, when's the grant process gonna start?
It's already started.
It's already started?
Yeah, we've got a nice.
So you gotta submit next. So next, like, on the eighteenth, we get the actual cost of the, the plans, and then make our class.
I, I think the, the plans will have a good thing, how much we ask.
How much we ask. Could you do this via email on the, and then, then we'll get a chance to chew on. They'll have it laid out in phases. You'll know a better estimate on where you're, you're gonna be on phase one. If the near target's phase one in this application, and we do have time to adjust this number prior to the grant being submitted. My question is, is, okay, fine, go to thirty-seven. When we get this report back, can we opt the, and grant, validate, or gratify that via vote and email? Vote on it next meeting, and that way that you guys got the data that you need to get the grant submitted.
that you need to get the grant submitted.
Cool. Yeah, we're, our, we are a grant team, and I think that we're, we are ready as, the only thing we're waiting for is our PAR from Thompson and Litten. And then, that shapes the scope of what we ask. But everything else is ready.
That should be next, too. What do you guys spend on 28th, correct?
27th.
27th, yeah, this time.
So, you're actually, we're waiting, waiting, and we're going to keep an eye on our emails.
Well, she's actually on the agenda again for a resolution.
So we can do like a conditional approval.
And we will ask for whatever you all want us to. We are just, I know me, I shot low in order to be a good teammate and not say, hey, give us a lot of cash, because it's a lot. So I am just trying to be cautious and...
You're a little early, too, because we don't actually have the figures.
Yeah. So, anything else?
It's exciting.
Yeah.
Good work.
Thanks.
All right, so, no unfinished business, so now we're going to move on to new business. First one's water and sewer bond resolution for Rock 460 Waterline Project. Any意見?
This is a lot. In terms of what you have before you regard the resolution that is required for purposes of going forward with the water treatment upgrade or water treatment upgrades. And for the bond, man, you can probably talk more to this than I can relative to what it covers. But it's basically a resolution that's required to be passed by council and I. I understand the PSA has already passed a companion resolution and working together to make this happen. You have this in your packet. It is four pages long. If you'd like for me to read it, I'll be delighted to do that. I'll keep everybody probably asleep, or get them asleep within the first probably 30 seconds of it. You might read it, but you can request for a read.
Motion to have you read it?
Here we go. It's basically sort of the way we want to vote, but I missed the heading for this. It's a resolution providing for the issuance sale award of taxable general authorization water and sewer bond, Series 2025A, in the town of Tassau, Virginia, and a principal amount not to exceed $1,300,000. Herefore authorized and provided for the form details and payment thereof. So, and it's basically, I have to read if anyone would like to go through and read it all.
I'll second Lee's reading.
So we have a second, any discussion? All in favor of waiving the, the reading of the water and sewer bond resolution for Rock 460 Waterline Project, states of West San A?
Aye.
All opposed, states of West San A?
And I think you would need them to vote on the resolution to pass it as well.
Make the motion to pass the resolution.
Second. We got a second, any discussion? So all in favor of approving the water and sewer bond resolution for Rock 460 Waterline Project, states of West San A?
Aye.
All opposed, states of West San A? Resolution passes.
I'm sure your viewing audience is thrilled.
They really wanted to hear that.
So, next on the agenda, is the first reading of the Shipping Container Ordinance Amendment. Turn to the mic.
Now this one we can handle, I think we won't be too bad. This is strictly an ordinance for the definitional sections within Chapter 23 of our zoning ordinance. As Chris has talked to you all in the past several months about needing to have actually a definition within our zoning, part of our zoning ordinances for Chapter 23, since we do not have anything to deal with that. So, go ahead, we've passed through. Planning Commission has recommended that council prepare an ordinance, at least amendment for Chapter 23, Act of Section 23-1, which we'll read as follows. It's amended amendment to existing ordinance, Chapter 23, Zoning, Article 1, in general, Section 23-1 definitions, be it ordained by the council in town of Tassau, Virginia, pursuant to Town Charter, Section 3-8, and Town Code, Section 23-6, that the council hereby asks the following amendments to Town Code, Section 23-21, regarding the definitions for words and phrases and the meaning described thereto as used within this chapter. Section 23-1 definitions amended. Shipping container, a standardized portable fully enclosed receptacle originally designed for the transportation of freight by commercial truck, train, or ship, that has been repurposed for the temporary storage of equipment, materials, or household goods for no more than 120 days with permit issued by the zoning administrator. And all other definitions identified in the section remain unchanged. This will be the only change to Section 23-1. This will be the first reading, no vote.
All right, so, next, on the same topic, we need to set a public hearing for Shipping Container Ordinance Amendment on one use for Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, at 7:15 PM. I maintain a motion to approve setting that hearing.
So moved?
Second.
I got a second, any discussion?
This is simply the companion use of the definition that I just read.
Good.
Because you know the definition allows 120 days in a residential zone with the permit. This will be only in the industrial zone where they can stay permanent.
So we've got a second, all in favor for setting the public hearing for Shipping Container Ordinance Amendment for Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, at 7:15, states of West San A?
Aye.
All opposed, states of West San A? All right, public hearing, waiting time will be set. So, next, fireworks for Independence Day celebration, Madam Reagan.
I do understand that we have snow in us today. But we're going to look ahead to July and warmer weather, right? So, for the record, we did try to get July 4th. It was not available to us. But July the 3rd was available, and it will be the same cost of last year, that's $12,000. In the packet, there's, there's a little note. They, for some reason, had it listed at Tassau High School. That is not correct, and Susan has asked for it to be corrected at Tassau Middle School. And if you all would approve this event and its funds, we will turn that back into dealing with that correction to have it at the middle school. And actually, having it on the 3rd this year kind of works out a little bit better because our, our town team will already be working that day. If we do the fireworks that evening, they would actually get July 4th off. And it's a Friday. I'm not going to say I want to have the weekend off, because if I do, that's going to jinx it. So, they would be like Friday. So, when you all like to move forward with fireworks, July 3rd, $12,000, Tassau Middle School.
One of the things we talked about last year was contingency day, say, particularly. So there are alternative dates in this?
So, there are postponement date, a date to be determined in 2025, excluding July 4th, 5th, and 6th.
Later.
So, I would think that a date in 2025, excluding those three days, what's it do?
Christmas. Let's turn the intention to Christmas.
Red, white, and blue, turn green, and red.
I have a motion to approve this, on the 3rd, for $12,000. I'll second.
I got a second, any discussion? All in favor of approving the fireworks for Independence Day on July 3rd? And the expense of $12,000 for the fireworks, states of West San A?
Aye.
No.
All opposed, states of West San A? All right, we're going to have fireworks.
We usually do.
We usually do, on a daily basis.
That's what I meant.
So, next is the Clinch River Pavilion Farmers Market Tobacco Commission Grant Application, resolution of support, despite the against going back.
Hello again. So, part of the Tobacco Commission application requires a resolution of support from the government body. I'm going to read it, Leanne said. So, here we go. Town of Tassau, Tassau Pavilion Resolution of Support. Whereas, the town council supports the efforts of the community organizations to improve and maintain the health and economic well-being of the residents of the town of Tassau and surrounding areas. And whereas, the town's Farmers Market seeks to provide access to fresh, locally grown produce, and is actively working to improve access to healthy, nutritious food options. And whereas, the organization provides fresh foods and vegetables from nearby farms, baked goods, and prepared foods to its customers at the Tassau's Farmers Market every Saturday from May through October. And whereas, the town council wishes to provide support toward the organization to assist in continued operation of the Tassau Farmers Market. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town of Tassau, town council, hereby authorizes the pursual of grant opportunities for the construction of the Clinch River Pavilion to be used by the Tassau's Farmers Market and provision of matching grants funds in the amount of... to be determined.
And this is a requirement of the grant, that we have a resolution of support.
Yeah.
So if you all would like for us to get you that number from Thompson and Litten, and we can fill that blank.
Yeah.
But we, we did want you to get the resolution.
Because this will be submitted with the package I said.
It will.
I motion to approve this resolution under the basis that we will determine the blank number, the to-be-eared number after getting the PAR from Thompson and Litten.
I'd like to have that.
Got a second, any discussion? All in favor of approving the Clinch River Pavilion Farmers Market Tobacco Commission Grant Application with the understanding that we'll add the amount once we get the information from Thompson and Litten? States of West San A?
Aye.
All opposed, states of West San A?
Thank you all.
Now, one of our favorite topics, budget amendments. Pressure Jessica.
So, in your packet, you should see the budget amendments that I put in. These are just to reallocate funds within the budget where needed. Do you have any questions?
Would you like for us to read them one by one?
Actually.
Yeah, they're not under due, but it's page one and, you know? Uh, which, bottom.
Uh, that's on page 200, because at least the bottom. It's in the packaging.
So, there have been some funds that were not originally allocated in the budget. We had got, an example, we, we got a grant and we just got the budget, we just got the funds in this budget year. However, the grant was actually last budget. So those funds were not accounted for in this budget. So really, all that Jessica has done is just work within the budget to repurpose. There may be some, okay, like, like an example, air audit. Air audit came in a little bit more than what we had expected. So, she took from other audits in the administration department to cover that. She's just tried to move.
That's Herman Guest number two in actual number. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendments.
I'll second.
All right, got a second, any discussion? All in favor of approving the budget amendments, states of West San A?
Aye.
All opposed, states of West San A? All right, there you go, Jessica. But I didn't see anything in the miscellaneous. Chief for the Public Comment, anybody got it?
Matt Williams.
Okay, Mr. Wenz, if you could come up and say your name and address, please.
My name's Matt Williams. I live at 186 Bear Ground Road, here in Tassau. And I came to this meeting to bring up an issue with my yard. I have a contract with, when I first moved down here in 2021, I got a contract with the town to put in the drain line, a new drain line from Jefferson, well, pretty much from Jeffersonville down. Well, it got put in in 2022. And according to the contract, it says 36 months after the completion. Well, I've had issues with my yard ever since, with flooding. I brought it to Chris Mitchell's attention. He brought it to Donnie's attention. They went out and they threw some dirt with rocks in it. So I had to go out and pick up rocks before I could mow my yard. Still flooding. Brought it to the attention again. They sent somebody out to dump tops over at the bottom portion of my property, where drain line is. Well, one of them is. And I walked out and I told the guy, I didn't need it there. I need it on the other side, where I'm having flooding issue. He walked over, stood on the drain line, or on the drain, looked at my yard. He called Todd to discuss it. Todd said, call Donnie. He called Donnie, and the guy, his exact words were, if you lower the drain cover, problem will be solved. If I go to fix this, I'm going to be happening in this yard. Well, if that's what you're hired to do, fix my yard, where the drain line goes. Well, somebody came out, I don't, I believe it may have been Chris, I don't know. They came out, took the drain cover off, took the frame out, put the drain cover back on, figure. And then they left the frame sitting there in the yard. I moved it to my driveway so I can mow and weed. Well, we got rain a couple of days later. No water was going on the drain, flooding my yard. So that's, I brought it to Dak's attention, brought it to Leanne's attention, which brought it back to Donnie's attention. Well, Donnie took me over there, I showed him where it was flooding. Couple of days later, I worked for the town. Couple of days later, I pulled off the trash truck to go with Chris, and we dumped dirt with rocks in it, after I requested not to. Again, I'd walked around picking up rocks so I could mow. And I messed up one of my blades because I didn't see some of the rocks. Well, a couple of weeks ago, we had all that rain that came in, and it's flooding in the spots where I specifically said, hey, we need to dump here. We need to dump over here. My yard's still flooding. So I would like to have it done professionally. And if it requires going halfway to my yard to feather it out so that the water drains where it's supposed to, so be it. Because I'm tired of walking and looking out my yard and just seeing puddles of water when it should have been fixed to begin with, the right way.
And it, isn't where the, the drain line is going underneath the dirt, and it's...
Yes.
Okay, so it's compacted.
There was a tree, well, there is a tree right up by the road. And I asked to have that removed. One, it would better access for them to dunk dirt behind it. Donnie refused because the line, the power line goes right through it. Okay, well, Chris said he could do it, Donnie still said no. So now you got to go on either side of the tree to try to dump behind the tree. And that's where one big puddle is. And then right next to the drain, there's a whole nother puddle. And the water's not going into the drain. And the top side of my property, they did put another drain up top so that the water would flow down into that. While the last time that we did plowing, While the last time that we did plowing, the gravel built up in front of that, and the water just went straight on down and ran into my yard, and now I've got probably almost a five gallon bucket full of gravel in my yard.
What was your address again?
186 Paraground Road. Most of you probably know where that's at. First brick cap right up on Paraground. I mean, and when they did asphalt, I want to say it was this past summer, they did put a little berm around that drained up on top, but a portion of it got knocked off. Well, I just went out there today because water was literally just flushing down, filled my driveway. Snow was all packed up in front of it, and part of that was knocked off. So I kind of pushed the snow away so it could start running into there and put that piece back up, at least for now, so the water would run into there and stop going down, flood my driveway out.
Does that cause any damage to your house?
The house, no, no, because my driveway slants a little bit towards the road, but it is causing damage going into my driveway, like where the driveway meets the road.
So when they replaced them, pipe risen, did it ever drain correctly?
No. And they've been out there, at least, I know at least once, that I had to help try to feather out as much as I could, and it's still not fixed the issue. And I'm just hired going to Donnie to try to get something done.
So they did this in...
This past, they did it in 2022, was when it got laid out originally, yes. Yeah, ours, Leanne, can't remember her last name.
Lambert.
Lambert.
Lambert, yes. Mr. Moss, and then...
Jeff Tor.
Yes. As soon as it came up to my yard, like I helped with the whole thing, as soon as it came to my yard, I got pulled off the project. Then they finished it. So...
Have you been out there?
And I have pictures from this last rain showing where the flooding is.
I wrote down, do you have pictures you could show us?
Yes.
I mean, you can, what, come see, give us some pictures?
Email them.
That's why I was supposed to email them to you, right?
Yeah, I'll get your email then.
You know, Mark, I mean...
Yes.
Yeah, we'll get the pictures to Leanne and we'll, we'll discuss and see what we can, what we can work on.
Have you contacted anybody about actually like redoing it, you said like have it done professional, have you contacted anybody?
No, the guy who came out, RJ, J R?
RJ.
Yes. He's the one that dumped it lower in, and he's the one that called Donnie and told him, oh, if I do it, I'll be happening in this yard. It's doing the job properly, right?
Well, part of it comes back to the, with the ease with it, the town got to do that, they probably just have to maybe modify that some way to make sure that there's not going to be an issue coming in other parts of your yard.
Right, yeah.
That may have to be discussed, something temporary.
Yeah, I have the contract, and I know Zach's got the contract too.
Something, yeah, a temporary, especially temporary access, he's going to use more...
Yeah, because it's a thirty-six month and it says fifteen feet, so, but they kind of went a little bit more, so instead of putting it into the bank, they brought it a little bit out to make it a little easier to lay, but all that water's still coming straight down in and flooding. And it's flooding the rest of my yard too, but I know you know the bill is so tall.
The photography there makes it difficult for that particular house.
Yes. Yeah, between where the one tree was where it fell and the other tree, it's flooded all of the air, but that's way off into the yard, so it's, I'm mainly worried where the drain is, and it's supposed to drain, not just puddle in front of it.
And we'll fix your berm too?
Yeah.
We'll get that fixed.
Yeah, the one thought I'm thinking, oh, berm all the way across, but all the way up to the driveway leans, but I'm like, I'm gonna knock it from out there, so...
Bring us pictures.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, I mean, she's, she's going to get her the pictures and, you know, that's what they can do to, you know, reconcile this situation.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
No one else to?
That's all.
Okay, so next on the agenda, council comments.
I've got two. I'll be quick, I'll be quick. First one is a question on abandoned houses, came from one of my neighbors on Layerver Avenue, I believe it's fine, not fine, it's Tower Street, it's actually Tower Street and Layerver Avenue. There's, there's an abandoned house, would be awesome if it was fixed, but backyard to it, still a lot of kids ride bikes and stuff back there, there's a tree that fell in the yard, and it's, you guys have already talked about this. So, so when's it getting, when's it getting chopped up then? But basically, it's, it's the house...
I know where it is.
Yeah.
It's the castle.
See, yeah, see if there's any action we can take on that to get that cleaned up, just stacks of neighborhood, kids playing around there, that type of thing. But the second one is, out of Leachshire, notice it on the trail, do you think that we're having issues with bank erosion? Well, you can see it where it's sliding off. The one that caught my attention, where I think we're gonna lose a piece of trail, is, let's see, there's not a really easy way to articulate that.
We talked about on the backside.
So it would be if you're, if you're arriving at the lake and you, you walk down the left-hand side past the, the station that's, that's there, right? Concession stand, you're probably a quarter mile, maybe less, down the trail, anyway, it's on the opposite side, so you see it from that side. It's near the pines, basically, if somebody walks around it, they'll see it. But the section of trail I'm concerned about, it, it does look as if it's kind of on a hillside, looks like the land's shifting, so before you lose the trail, see if there's anything worth doing to, to work on that. The other thing that's reconsidered on that, especially on that backside on the steep bridges, is not mowing that down hallway, maybe planting some stuff that prevents the erosion. But, yeah, just bringing that to your attention.
I noticed that a couple of weeks ago, the big, I mean, the...
Yeah, there's a business activity. I would just like to bring on the public works department, I mean, I've been all over the county today, and the roads in town work best, I've been counting. I know before, I thought they were working this one, so they've done a wonderful job.
So on Main Street, there's a two hour parking lane. So I got a gentleman that works out in the coal building, and they seem to be getting tickets here and there because they don't get out and move their vehicle in a timely manner. What they're asking me is, there's really no business on that end of the street, say from Thompson, Litten, down, and I guess what they're asking for is...
I don't mind to speak on it, we've, we've had visited this numerous times, I do agree with this gentleman, I need some action from council or from the town manager to make afford, that's not a two hour parking down there, that's all I need to make this happen. But I don't know how to, because the courts always ask us, when you have a contested case, are you consistent? We are consistent when we have the manpower to do it. I don't have a problem, and I agree with what you said.
But would it change back if someone goes in the painted pink building?
I'm sorry?
Would it revert back to if someone...
You can always readdress it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And speaking of the painted pink, where are we with that?
We still don't have a decision, but we'll talk on that. I'd like to talk on that. If you were suggesting where to, because I'm off the two hour limit, where would you suggest that that start, like at Amy Cecil's building or...
West Avenue.
Is it west?
West Avenue.
Right there where the old eight, usually eighteen or Verizon building or whatever it is, in that direction, yes. I've said the old, I guess it's still Verizon, one of the particular has...
Well, I think the only state that's above.
And that was, that was a major issue, if you all recall, of that several years ago, the council didn't want to give, I think, one parking spot, if I recall correctly, maybe two, I don't remember. We're very lenient with her since that is her home. We try to make sure she has two places there, if somebody's visiting her, we do try to accommodate her, but that was an issue just...
I know, sometimes she just parks long in her driveway.
Yes.
Charlie?
So if we just...
So I thought I...
Like make a lawn right where that, because it would be pretty much like West Avenue and then right across from that is where Thompson and Litten is, isn't it?
Yes.
Right at that corner.
Pretty much, yes.
And just make it down to exclude that from the two hour parking limit, and then we can readdress it when we have business at that end.
We have no issues at all. Whether this way we come, the better, we don't get as much chewing, we have no issues, I'm, I'm for whatever council seems fit, I have no objection to being in the...
Let's throw some permits there.
Motion to that?
Bless.
I'm making a motion.
For what?
That, what is the name of that street there?
West Avenue.
West Avenue down to Miss Partica.
Partica.
That.
That Jeff, that Jeff, West Jeff, that's Jeff.
For timing, Fred.
Jacksonville.
I'm in their part.
Yep, so, got a motion, I guess there.
What about...
Two hours.
You are welcome.
Yes.
You're gonna stay tagged and win on?
Oh, yes, you will. Yeah, I lost the train over that one.
Looked at what I just...
I'll second that motion.
I, I don't think I heard, is it removing the two hour parking, is there like a daily, is there an hourly, twenty-four hour parking limit?
Well, they, they're not, they just...
It's business hours.
Yeah, they're moving around, they're only there from like maybe nine, four.
That's plenty of weekends.
It's three individuals that work out of the coal building.
Danny, if I might ask, there's parking behind the coal building. They've got a back door entrance, I used to work in that building.
Yes, but that is for the finance, like if I'm not mistaken.
I'm just saying there's parking behind that building.
I don't like them in the back door like doing...
It's not like you're going in the kitchen, going to the steak tongue. So...
He knows the street, Paul, he drives.
They do have parking access back there.
Yes, I'm, I'm aware.
And because I used to get busted on by Mr. Hart's former manager, that used to leave me notes for parking in his spot in the back of the building. Yes.
Did you move around some of that?
No, I just moved down one spot in the back because there's plenty of spots in the back.
I thought somebody just walked.
You're through the door.
So I do have a second, so, all in favor for approval from...
Can I ask you a question first? Would it be permissible if I abstained since I'm at work there or am I permitted to vote on this? She works on the front row.
She works on the other side, that's true.
It would be from the other side too, isn't it?
Yes. Both sides don't need to...
Both sides. Are we doing both sides of the street?
Yes. Okay, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, it would be both sides, it would be, it would be common.
The picture that Mr. Mitchell showed, you know, if they get out to go down over the bank, they're done. And then, you know, they're able to step off.
Is it okay for you to vote? How would, you would, I was trying to...
So all in favor of allowing for twenty-four hour parking access, so one understand, from West Street down to Jacksonville?
It's excluding the two hour limit, taking off the two hour limit.
Yeah, taking off the two hour.
We're removing the two hour limit from West Street down to Jacksonville Street, states of West End, I? All opposed, states of West End, I?
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dan.
I have a comment as well, I would just like to clarify that, as a lot of people know, I am an employee of Tassau Today, and because Tassau Today is supported by the town, I disqualify myself from discussing and voting on anything that relates to Tassau Today, unless there are two other entities that are similarly situated. I would just like to say that I am disqualifying myself from discussing and voting on it, but that does not mean that I should not know about it. So I can still know about it and hear all of the discussion, but I do not participate in the discussion or vote on it.
Anything else?
I do have one. I had a citizen come up and ask, and I don't know, I don't know the right way to police it or what, but we have, from, their complaint to me was that there are a lot of unlicensed contractors doing work in town limits, and we have people that do pay their business licenses and go through the proper steps to do their, run their business properly, and because other folks don't do that, they can, they have a competitive advantage, and I think we owe it to those folks that do go through the process the correct way to try to police that in some way a little bit better, I don't know what, what that is, and it's hard when there's a truck in the driveway.
So I have a question, are they unlicensed, that they are not licensed to do the work, or they don't have the town business license?
The way I understood this complaint in particular, it's both.
Okay.
Anybody gets a building permit from me, I'll just check, see if I got a business one.
Okay, I, I think it's like...
People not getting...
Handyman, work under the table type.
Grass cutters and all? Probably. That's happened, I dare.
But I think this was plumbing and electrical and that kind of work.
I mean, if we see them doing business, we can absolutely ask, hey, do you have business license?
I have sent police to houses before, had them come get their business license.
I mean, like, everybody wants to get a cheap fix and it's hard to, hard to afford it, but we do owe it to the businesses that jump in the hoops.
If they're an unlicensed contractor, like plumbing and electrical, they're supposed to have a license through Department of Professional Occupational Regulation, and if they do not, you can make a complaint through that organization.
D four?
Yeah, D four.
That's a good, that's a good one.
Yeah.
I have had people tell me that the town don't need my money, I can hire electricians if I want to in my house, but I just, that was years ago, the one as mean as I am now.
If, if the homeowner, homeowner takes out the permit...
Right.
Then it's on the homeowner to do the work.
There's a lot of contractors in town that'll pull a permit for the whole job, and they'll have subcontractors under it that's still on the permit. But if you have a fly by night guy coming in and working on your plumbing stuff, and I don't see him in the driveway, I'm not gonna catch him.
Right.
I'm not a fly by night guy, I saved a man's face from me yesterday.
You got a plumber, why?
I got plumber too.
Motion to the jury, six? All in favor of space to by say a nay?
Aye.
All opposed, space to by say a nay?